And John, you can tell me if he's not private, would he should be here?
Yes.
Is he already, is he already called him?
He's been here for us.
He does, okay. Oh, no, no. Um, I can call John, but he is, I don't have his cell phone, not Frank.
Someone is calling.
He's on the way, it's not there yet.
This guy's, this guy's, this guy's got further issues. So, so, so things, those things, come on.
Mark.
What's the issue?
People mask them.
I was telling my kids that for an hour.
Totally. You must have missed the last of the day.
Yeah.
Listen, stop playing.
Of all of it, what was that? The look in the garbage. The uncoordinated.
Oh, yeah.
The uncoordinated.
Okay, I'll come here right now. Good, good.
Uncoordinated.
I have to do it right now.
Wait, wait, wait.
I just had to.
Yeah, yeah.
And Ellie. I think she's got it.
It's wrong. It didn't work. Just play.
How's your, how's your answer?
Just play. No, just play. Hey, you're not a shooter.
Nah, we're all pretty. You, you see, you know, you, that's the one with the, that's the queen.
Where you have the dorm rooms and that's why we're here because if you need application, we need the setback here for most of this, and said again it makes sense, we'll bring back the plan. Uh, you know, that's what the applicant will do.
My personal opinion, I don't care what's said that, I don't care, I think you're the fish in the pot. Like the other board members said.
What's the requirement now for a dorm room in these rooms? You said twenty eight?
The dorm requirement is twenty two five eight.
And what are the base addresses?
The base address is unparking phase for room, it's gonna be one room, so.
It's so congested there right now.
There's no parking there now?
And.
People park, people park in the old base school behind the gym park lot. There's three, for the whole thing over there, it's about three hundred parking lots.
And if we were just getting this, I wouldn't even be here, I would have invited my client to come. But we're not getting this, we're taking away twelve apartments. So that's twelve apartments that are parked there now.
How many, how many points are there issue? It's concept on this one.
Correct.
It's a farm building now, they're hopefully convert to thirteen dorms.
Yeah, but there's gonna be a bay, there's gonna be a pod, there's gonna be a greater need for parking, not lots anymore.
Well, that's bad.
What about these things? Driveway goes to the apartment, eleven feet wide, isn't it?
Yes.
That's.
Well, it's a problem for us to get a apartment. You go, you go to New York, you go to where the apartment is.
You move to a waiting lot, where are the places?
And that's why the applicant didn't want to spend money come here. To him, this makes sense, he talked to people, a lot of people said it makes sense. When he, when he talked to me, I said that there's a lot of parks here that the board may not like. We should come and show with them and get their invoice before you spend any money.
Yeah.
Well, I like the concept, I, I live in fashion, so.
So you love it?
I, to me, the reason, the reason I said come here is because we're taking away the twelve apartments. So that's, there's already, you talk about the cars that park next door, probably some of those twelve apartments. Because those guys would all have a car. Uh, and you're replacing twelve guys with cars for.
Is it gonna be access from the driveway, from the apartment lot, to actually dormitory or the shore? Or we're gonna have to go around?
Uh, again, it's a concept, my, my thought would be that there would be a door on the lower level here so that they can come in and then they get into the dorm room. And, you know, if, if this makes any sense and, and the board says, you know, we can come back with more details. If he's spinning wheels and I see a couple of them from coming out, we've had seen before, that, you know, nobody's gonna ask, well then, he'll give the apartment owner that air and maybe put the base addresses in text.
Yeah.
But they should make it your parks by anyways, even if you don't.
They're not gonna make any more parks by, they're gonna leave it to people.
There's no park.
Because of the. Connect, it's empty stays there now.
No, no, it's empty in the back now. No, it's empty, it's existing, it's staying out there. That's existing.
That's where they park them at.
True, you see a little line, it's true, it's true.
How long is going to park garage, and putting the base address on top of park garage?
That's fine.
It's a lot of money, so. Yeah.
Brian, I think they have to come back with the board. I think this board, I don't think you have, I think they're concerned, everybody.
Okay.
Too many unknowns.
And would you like us to come back with more details?
Right now, I think our parks don't need more parking. We're giving you a lot of floor, I think you can't come with less parking, more parking.
But, and again, this isn't less parking, but if, if you feel that the dorm room, the base address is gonna have more parking.
Yeah, but Brian, according to the code.
It's the fish, right?
If you, you probably need, for the parking to be twenty eight, and then for the dorm to be another three?
No, no, the twenty eight is for two, we're getting rid of it.
Okay, so.
So my, my calculation is dispatch would be fifteen, but there now, we need twenty eight. So we're, we're.
According to dispatch, you think you need fifteen door, and the fish won't park?
From New York?
Cause it's, it's point two five, but when you do fifteen doors, you need three parking lots, three and a half. And, uh, and, and there's a base address in one way, right? It's a shit one, eighty four, and then the.
And only use four, I'm not sure if it's.
No, it's, it's, no one in the office is getting a lot.
So that doesn't work like a regular synagogue, that you go per square footage?
Yeah. The base, the base address is more like a school, and you go one per office, one per.
So definitely it's meant to be a school? As far as parking needs?
It's not just a school, it is a school.
It's a school.
But technically, per school, you put a thousand kids into one room, as long as it's one room, no parking space?
Right, and that's the concept, it would be, it would be a study.
They would have to visit that.
Welcome to Lake.
This is Lake. Brian, Brian, I know different parts, right now, instead of twenty eight, you probably need about forty five. So it's already a decision. I, I, I don't.
And let me first go like.
And, and again, we said that if the board feels this would make more parking rather than not.
Yes.
And let me feed the driveway.
You got more parking in that address, what do you do with the parking?
Well, it, it's, well, first of all, the park is only back there, but it doesn't seem like, as you said anyway, you love the foot is coming in, and then you have twenty one feet going out.
No, okay, I think it's a, it's a one way.
Yes, one way in and then twenty one feet out.
Cool, there.
We don't, we don't go this.
No, you don't.
No, you can, you can input, I heard the input, my, my client can watch the recording.
What, we see here?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You should have just the reservation.
Brian, do you have the compliance for the next development actually going to have a need in case the problem happens?
I know that was. The site next door is not for the development, it's the old drive, right? It's not for the people.
They, they, they have the, it's a solution, etc. No, it's, uh, but there's no, you do want to.
We just got an approval and November sixteenth, uh, it's on, say. I do, Brian Meyer, yes, in the Jersey license, first on the chair, professional. The, uh, so, it received approval in, uh. Yes.
I was trying to take it down.
Um, yeah. It, it received approval a little less than two years ago, we're asking for retention, it's on seventy, it's gonna be a C permit. We're close to being ready to file that now, and in the few years we got, for the, uh, this land, you just don't anticipate the.
It was great for residential, buying tissues and, we have, I thought the advisor, he just received the permanent lease to clear. Um, we have to tell him, just to be observant, and it's.
Nothing changed.
Not, nothing changed with the original approval, it was just, yes, confirmation, all the, all third party approvals, not deleted. That's the only reason.
So what answer we are waiting?
Another question, question. And is this discussion about emergency exit, will be a twenty five foot emergency exit? That's a second, I guess, either the, I guess, that was the part of the resolutions?
This one, I'm, I'm just trying to, it has a, it has a. The building next door, right, Brian, is this the one? X two, the, uh.
Yes, yes.
And that has a piece in there.
It's a main, yes, access. If this has, there's an unlead road, uh, coming off of Route seventy, and with the main access to the property business, and then it has the emergency access, uh, to the property next door, which has an emergency access hole.
I think they, they revised the plan, they're not sure about, you know, trying to look, I was trying to look up the original plans. I think they have added another house of that space. Now there's still twenty five feet, I think so.
They, they have another house.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, if you're out there, but you can see, they left space in between.
That's a parking, parking lot, a curb.
Yes, and, and, and that's, this is a parking lot, uh, and that's a parking lot, so emergency vehicles are just right there.
Even when the cars are parked, it's still twenty five feet to go?
No, well, it's, uh, any emergency access, if somebody parks in front of it, it creates a problem.
But it's legal parking spots for cars, I mean, part, part of the development. And there's still twenty five feet play space.
I, I drove past it, and I, I could see that there's less of the space in between. Uh, I, I can't imagine how they're gonna have cars that would be parked in, in that direction and be blocked.
There's a driver, there's a shore, there's a little shore over there.
Right.
And there's a roadway, and it's parking spots. I believe there was supposed to be twenty five handle access. Without the parking lot, unless I'm wrong, but I think that's.
That could certainly be something that has, that the.
I think I may ask you your question, the, the plan may need some revisions to line up with what you're saying of the sites, uh, construction next week. But the, the driveway will have the match of the emergency vehicle, you have one side, yeah.
But did they, does anything change from what we approved originally? I asked.
Uh, not yet.
Making out of this obligation, but the next obligation, which reflects.
Well, the, the reason I say not yet, that, one of the reasons that, in this is for extension, there is an issue with the end unit, uh, with respect to an access unit. Where they're having trouble figuring out how to make it fit, you notice.
Wh- wh- where is that, was that?
That's on the way, on the upper left-hand corner of the drawing, at that townhouse. Last unit.
Okay. But now we're talking, discussing about the emergency access.
Now, you're, you're talking in the bottom right, bottom right, and where there may have to be some type of, uh, little adjustment in the parking lot configuration, so that the access paths line up between the sites.
I think you should go for the board to make sure we have that, the monument, make sure it's clear access.
Well, it's, it's, it's required, we're, we're not giving them. We have to be able to file until the resolution of lines is completed, and the part of resolution of lines will be making, uh, the engineering office have to make sure our lines up.
Okay.
Again, nothing, as far as, to go back to your question, nothing from this approval has changed. This is all stated, it's not that happens, it's all after the fact.
I don't want to put the bill, I don't want to have the bills and this kind of relation of the owner.
It's a, that's why, it's an as of.
This map doesn't sign or file or construct or proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion, will you get the extension? No.
Did you have one to make the extension of the question?
We'd like to, well, we, we only need one year, but if things go slow, we, we typically ask for two, one year extension.
One more question, I think this is a new question, because I don't know. When, when you consider start, starting to build, that's when you don't need the extension, okay? When is that considered, when the tree goes?
On the map, it's five.
When the map?
The map is five.
Which means?
Which means all the conditions are met, the emergency access lines up, all the I've got, the keys required.
And J is on the.
Not really start going.
Now, the board engineer signed off, the town's engineer signed off, the county clerk signed off, the county engineer signed off, the county clerk signed off, it's, it's handed in with fifty five dollars and.
That creates all these original access.
And then is it considered a new build or?
We'll have to.
Our last motion, go along with the extension, I will, hold, hold a second, roll call.
Mrs. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Shabel.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Eisen.
Yes.
Mr. Hyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
As E twenty three fifty six is on your subdivision for DJF and partners, so they five lots from.
Hold on, please. The month of the fall.
Twenty three thirty.
So Dave, would you like to put two minutes for?
Yes, uh, let, uh, fire with the, uh, one person, I'll put, we'll look at the second. Okay, the first, um, issue is about, uh.
Zero point?
About variable dedication, uh, at corners, which would require, as it stands right now, uh, my evidence is, we're gonna do testimony as to why the lot lines can be shifted to the rest variable dedication to what currently implied, because the end lot on Old Street, three oh one, uh, is oversized for, for the zone. And the other, we're asking for some, I don't know, front yard setback variances, uh, the, uh, on a lot, it's pretty much, uh, and it's, uh, all the Parkview and Edgecombe, if I'm correct, at, at that end of the property. And then, design waivers, uh, well, technically, the design waivers for sidewalk right now, which is what I understand, they're gonna provide them on a, on a plot plan to, they'll show, not, uh, that now.
Good, thank you.
I do, Brian Meyer, yes, in the Jersey license, first on the chair, professional. This is an application that has a minor subdivision to adjust lot lots. We have four existing lots, uh, we're adjusting the lots to have ten thousand square foot lots, uh, and, and, uh, it may remain a lot in the end. It's a property that is in the old street four area, but it's not part of the old street four. And two exhibits, A one is the map that we, uh, prepared, which just shows all the new lot line will be. Uh, A two, uh, is the tax map, and it shows where it is, and you can see for the tax map that right corner of the H P seven zone, where, uh, townhouses, uh, townhouses, two flights are already being developed, uh, to the, uh, north, and, and east of us, we have schools, to the south of us, we have schools. So it's a little piece of that old street four area that's left over that ultimately is gonna be duplex. Uh, somebody's gonna come back with plans, because the duplexes, when they build it, they're gonna, uh, put in the street trees, and the, the curbs, and sidewalks, and everything that's needed. Currently, uh, the applicant that's developing those duplexes is developing this room, uh, and it was an application associated with the, uh, the end lot, uh, to provide an access, uh, and, and, and turnaround for the property at the end, so that over is bonded as well. So what we're doing is chopping up now, gave these comments with respect to giving a dedication, if we give a dedication, uh, at that corner, uh, it takes, without moving the lots over, and if we move lots over, the, the lot on the end that has the beginning parcel, he was nice enough, he gave us enough, he gave ten thousand square foot lots. And we went back to him and said we liked a little bit more, and he said, you got ten thousand, that's enough. So what we're proposing is we'll do a right way, or a reasonable at that point, it provides the same thing, uh, without leaving wooded land, and changing the lot area from ten thousand square feet to nine thousand, nine hundred ninety four, which creates a problem. So the, uh, so variances that we're asking for is a, a front yard setback variance. And the reason we're asking for the front yard setback variance is because in the adjoining zone.
The front yard setback to which do?
Uh.
Why do you consider the front over there?
Uh, the front is all Z Street, Parkview, and Edgecombe.
We have three frontages.
Three frontages.
Okay.
Uh, Edgecombe isn't gonna be built at all, Edgecombe.
Is it, is it paper street?
It's a paper street, and, and the school is behind us, uh, and we're, we're not gonna front on it. Uh, so theoretically, that we're not needing it built. I, I don't know where the school plans is, and maybe the school will build, build it, but we're, we're asking for that, and we're asking for twenty five on Parkview.
So you're asking a waiver not to develop, finish your edge from, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, uh, uh.
Brian, yeah, where's Route nine on that map?
Route nine and eighty two is all the way to the left.
All right, and what's on the, the other side of the map?
It's that old street, old street school, the, all the, the duplexes that are going in, uh, and, uh, uh, Yeshiva Culture.
So this is south of the old street?
Yes.
Brian, where's, where's Yeshiva Culture?
Yeshiva Culture is immediately across the Altie Street from us, on block one of all nine.
Altie Street is also Penn Street, or it's about.
Uh, Altie Street is a bond, it's a bonded group, uh, the road plan was submitted, uh, bond was placed, and, and again, as indicated, the end lot, they put in, to fund, to build that road in order to provide a turnaround. Uh, part, part of the situation here as well was that, uh, as far as the old Altie Street, the original developer was gonna stop, uh, right at the intersection, and because of the grading, that, that would have created border problems that would have gone on onto, uh, Yeshiva Culture. Because currently, in the wooded condition, the border all ran through here. Uh, by the end lot, who, the, a very cooperative gentleman, uh, putting the road in at this time, drainage could be put in, and then additional drainage was put underground to recharge all that work, uh, instead of letting it flow. You're allowed to release, uh, at rates where free belt is on a coast. Uh, but the new design was done for that whole area, and, and then when that new design was done, the owners of all these lots got together and said, let's do a minor subdivision, chop it into that half square of lots that, uh, with duplexes, uh, in your R ten A, and we leave, and we're asking for this front yard setback, which is consistent with the H P seven, which is joining us, and his other reason is that we have the schools, uh, and if we cut the houses a little more forward, so that we have more separation to the schools, to benefit to the school and to that.
So Brian, there's two blocks over there, right?
Yes.
What are all the lines, and isn't that your lot, the paper one?
Yes, yes.
You're visiting.
Yes.
Those are very small lots.
Yes, yeah, they, they, back in the early nineteen hundreds, and you bought a newspaper subscription, they gave one of those twenty foot wide lots. And then somebody.
What's that newspaper?
Uh, I don't know, I know it's around a long time, but I wasn't near that.
That's a dispatch, yeah.
For the long time.
The technically worthless lot.
It's not practical, it's very light.
Yeah, the lots.
John Norley should have his paper out.
Those lots mean nothing.
Those lots mean nothing.
Okay, okay, let's look at that, so there's a bunch of lots.
Five lots.
So you have, you have four lots, which is ten thousand square foot, and one lot, which is eighteen thousand square foot.
Yes, yes. Like, like the, uh.
And Brian, you expected to be two questions then?
Yes, that's why the ten thousand square foot lot.
The only variant is you're saying you're asking is the front?
The front yard setback, and if the board doesn't find my testimony compelling, they don't have to grant that. It's just that the only neighbors are the school across the street, the, the H P seven, which has the same, uh, the same twenty five foot setback requirement, uh, and, and it provides separation from us and, and school.
Who's on the eighteen thousand square foot lot? That's also, that's me and Rupert?
Uh, the eighteen thousand square foot lot, uh, may, it may be duplex, it may be part of the property access to the school, uh.
It's too big for Rupert.
But it's.
You can split it.
It's too big for duplex, but he, he's talking with the school, so if the school needs access, if, if the driveway, the school needs a house, and he's a bigger piece of property, uh, it's normally I get trouble with paying lots that are too small, rather than too big. But that, that's the way these four property owners planned it up, and he asked him to, for a little property in order to, uh.
And, and it's too small for school, I think.
Well, it's not, it's not only a school, if this is school approved, uh, on, on all the lots in this area, to the, uh, and, and school's actually under construction at this point.
So basically, we asked for four lots, the only waiver for front yard setback.
It's, it's the only variance in front yard setback, we're also asking for a waiver to deny improved access zones that I don't think will, will ever be approved, uh, and.
What's the status of that?
At the time, at the time somebody comes in for a duplex, uh, if, uh, anybody gives a, they'd be required to approve it at that time, uh.
Wait, wait, one second, the, the property, lot one point oh one. It's gonna have its frontage to Parkview.
Required, yes.
And what's on Edgecombe right now, street?
On Edgecombe or Altie?
Edgecombe.
Uh, no, Edgecombe, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, Edgecombe's street, street, yeah.
And you don't anticipate that being a lot?
No.
Why not, just here?
Uh, because the, the school in back has access out the other way, uh, but, but I, I, I understand it is a school, and if they change, they can't, well, then.
For, 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 I do, I agree with the school approval, Edgecombe will be approved by, by getting access to the school. So, well, uh, this developer does have to approve it, it is made approved under this application.
My question is, they have to do it front of their property, or the school's gonna be doing the whole edgecombe?
They're doing all streets, I remember. Because, because they're coming from the Parkview intersection, you get access into their school site.
That was, that's in your office, right, that was approved by?
That's, uh, goes back a number of years, school is a built app, but has growth.
Uh, this, this applicant was certainly opposed to the bonds for putting in, uh, curb to sidewalk along his lines, uh, at that area, so.
Any questions for any board members?
I would like to put the, uh, back, my, uh, uh, various, various variances. We, we asking for C two variance, we gotta show that this is our presentment by, that's only a presentment. As far as the benefit, the next, twenty seventeen, background information on page two, both that will broken out on page three. We conclude with, based on this information, it's important that the potential residential development, for our population, which was a physical two, envision state, and encourage orders of development in appropriate locations, consistent with essential land uses, and this certainly is best, if duplexes are around it, it's better to be between the schools. Uh, so, uh, it might have some more benefits out of the detriment, and we're ready to do that any detriment at the moment.
What is the setback to the next development?
Uh, see, on the H P seven line, it's twenty five feet, same.
Current is twenty five.
Yes.
So it's gonna look this way. And behind it, on the R ten?
Uh, because your R ten A is third, we're asking for twenty five, you can see, we're not gonna have any, uh, R ten A development of property, because we got the school, H P seven in front of us, and a, a H P seven to the west of us.
On Parkview, that one of twenty. Fronting Parkview?
Well, the ones on Parkview are the H P seven. So if, if you go around, if you go around our property, you got schools, schools, H P seven, H P seven.
And H P seven wants a hundred?
Twenty five.
So it's in the area.
Right, it's in what's being built.
But on the, two houses, fronting Parkview, and this, and this, and this property, you still, only a twenty feet front.
Uh, that, that was a, the state, yes, with the twenty feet, that's the drag, we have, we want twenty five feet. Twenty five feet on Parkview.
They'll make that, the lot, smaller. They'll make that, the lot, smaller, that's a lot smaller than that.
No, the lot says the same thing. So Parkview, we want twenty-five.
Is it says twenty? It says twenty.
If it says twenty, it's wrong.
So you test to find that all lots will be twenty-five?
On Edge Home, we're asking for twenty, because the house is not gonna be fronting, that's the side you are.
So it's front of Parkview, seventy twenty-five?
But it's still, that's gonna be the side of the house, or, or an house that's gonna be front of Park. So we're asking for twenty on Edge Home, uh, twenty-five on Parkview, and twenty-five on Holte. Yes, 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 yes. So we, we, we have, okay, we amended to, and I think in April forty, we found that, yes.
And the side setback on Edge Home, how much would be required? You're giving twenty, how much do we require?
Twenty-third.
Third, so you're getting penalized, and it's giving side to school, okay? Because it's considered a front setback, because it's a bench tree, that's why it'd be thirty. Technically, a smart setback would only be ten, I think. What's the case it's about? Some sort of buffer, some sort of gate, or something inside, or, or at the front of the National? Should we?
It's not a front, it's not the difference.
Can we open it to the other road? It's gonna be, just as, said, maybe.
It's not really really a whole gap.
Right, of course.
It happens, it's a bit more.
We know that's bad, right?
But they take advantage of that. If you find it somehow, the property already belongs to Edge Home, we, 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 we're gonna bend it, we already asked. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do, uh, land.
Something to do. Any other board members have any questions? So no, welcome to the public, anyone for the public, I'd like to be heard on this application, please come on.
William McLean, one eighty-nine. Um, Brian, uh, this is going to be developed with the street?
Yeah.
So there's no access to here to Old Street? No access only here to Old Street?
That's correct, this is the vacay, so there's no access. This, Ishiba Cultural, that's all that property.
So this street is developed, is going to be developed?
It's going to be developed, there's a bond, it's already...
And how are they circling over here?
Uh, there's a hammerhead at the end.
Which street is that?
Holte.
Where's the hammerhead, tell me?
Hammerhead all the way at the end of it, just before it gets into the Ishiba Cultural.
We don't see it in the map, though.
So what's happening with these houses over here, with the slots over here?
Ishiba Cultural.
It's already approved.
Uh, I, I think they only have approval for their school, there's a school building there, right now it's all their place.
And is there a sidewalk over here, or goes by the school?
Uh, no.
And why didn't they require that there's sidewalks?
So if the road was, it's being developed by this end lot, to provide access to his lot, uh...
I'm just, I, I just wanted to bring out a, uh, I was just trying to bring out a point, I was just trying to put it on the spot. I was just trying to bring out a point, what happened over here is, when the school came in for their application, over here, they were not required to put a sidewalks, because they claim this is a hundred-foot road. Why are you making us put a sidewalks in the back of a lot, we have kind of a frontage to Old Street? So, you have to know, always when an applicant comes in and says, listen, this road is not being approved, and then somebody else comes and approves the road, the guy that approves the road doesn't have to put a sidewalks, if it's not frontage of their property. So sidewalks, and he pointed it out when we asked him about this one, it's going to be approved. Brian said that I will put in sidewalks over here, because he knows that the applicant over here, that asked for this road to be approved, he's only being required to put sidewalks over here, not in front of this property. And that's how Old Street corridor, the famous Old Street corridor, is full of spots with no sidewalks, because of this problem, because everybody comes in, they put their hand to the sand, and we only talk about this application, and not with something else, and we're missing sidewalks over there. You have the influence of people of Brooklyn coming in with streetless, and all of that, and there's no sidewalks in a lot of spots, and people have to go on their own. So this is, Brian was like saying it, but you should, you should, he's asking for a waiver on sidewalks over here, you shouldn't let him get away with it.
That is not, he's talking about.
No, 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 he, he said, he set out the record, that he's going to put a sidewalks. I just don't wanna find out, the resolution, that nobody realized that he said it. He actually said that he's putting in there sidewalks over here.
From this property?
Sideways on all frontage, and if the board, uh, wants a six-foot fence along Edge Home, and, and, and you grant us the variance relief, as the ordinance says it can only be four, we'll happily put it in a six-foot fence along Edge Home on the side. Uh, so the six-foot fence, then our, our duplex, and on the outside of the six-foot fence will be the sidewalk, uh, so that the, everybody coming with the streetless has a, has where to go.
I just wanna bring out one more point, I know I said it in the past. It's about trying to get applicants to put in, I know the board is not obligated to do that. Sprinklers in the basement, doesn't cost so much, to put in the sprinklers in the basement, a lot of, uh, legalities get taken care of. He's asking for variances, so again, maybe the board will be inclined to give it to you without giving them anything, or maybe if the applicant says, we will put it, um, attacked by this only board, that the applicant said is, we will put in sprinklers, and the board says is, oh, if you're such a nice guy, we'll give you the extra variance. And you're allowed by your landlord, you'll be, to use that as far as trying to get the applicant, even though you cannot look at it, but it makes you look more favorable on the variance that he's asking. I'm asking the applicant if he's willing to go, but then, that's up to the board, thank you.
Mr. Jackson, isn't that a, a building issue? We have a short presentation there, it's a building code?
Uh, Frank, what do you got?
Yeah, Michael?
Sometimes it's a grand variance, I think what you said, and leverage to, uh, to manage, but, you know, that, that's a very, that's a thing to put on a, 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 um, depending on what the board wants to do.
And if it's a building code, and they're required, then...
If they're required by building code, it's hard.
They have to, they have to require, as a lot of people have.
Right.
Brian, does Holte Street go to Route Nine?
Yes.
And then, there is no sidewalk on the north side of Holte before, before our property, before this property.
There's no sidewalk on the north side, only sidewalk on the south.
From Route Nine?
Yes.
There is no sidewalk over here?
Yes, from Route Nine, there'll be sidewalk on the south side of Holte, and a little bit of sidewalk on the south side of Holte. And Ishiba Cultural will be back to the board, because they wanna build more. And if the board at that time feels that there's gonna be sidewalk on the, on the north side of Holte, it's certainly, it's time to...
What's on the, on, if you go to Street in this property, I don't see it on our map over here. Where it says after the seven, H P dash seven afterwards, until the blue line?
Until the blue line, it's, uh, Lot one oh five.
Further, further, there we go, one more, one more property, yeah, what's that?
Okay, okay, here, that property is also a home on Ishiba Cultural.
And what's their current line?
What's their current tree?
It's gonna be something about it off there.
Yeah, they, they'll be back here for a site plan to build something there.
Anyone asking public, I'd like to be heard on this application, see no one, we'll close the public, uh, or ask for motion on this application. Can we, can we, what's on Park Avenue, in the west side of Park Avenue, sidewalk over there?
The west side of Park, Parkview, yes.
The Parkview.
Okay, those, those, who's asking, so far, building side, yes.
So the duty side of one of those blocks?
That side, yep.
I would ask for a motion, I think with understanding that Edge Home, uh, at least a mark or something, we just saw them... What I got to build in, mark for... For that truck for the, for her.
And, and it was a question about the fence, if, if the board wants a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence. And if it's a six-foot fence, they have to grant the relief, which I think you can do that, if you add...
Remember what I motioned, from my motion, with the fence, without a fence?
With a fence.
Four for the six foot, and we will grant the variance on that one, okay, we have a second of that.
So let me understand this motion, the motion is for approval with a six-foot fence, with sidewalks mandatory, and with bonding to the road, those are the conditions.
And for the, that's about it, all for the, no, it's size Edge Home.
Side, sidewalks.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we understand what's going on.
It's thirty and twenty-five. On the, twenty-five thousand?
Edge Home, we're asking for a twenty-foot setback, uh...
But that's a rear.
Parkview, Parkview and Holte, we're asking for twenty-five. And, and just so we're clear on the limit of the, the fence, it would be from the easterly most part of our property to the side triangle, so that we don't create any side issue.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Let's, let's put the condition bar.
Yes.
Want to talk to you too?
So there's gonna be a six-foot fence along?
Edge Home.
Edge Home Avenue?
Excluding the side triangle.
I'm sorry?
Excluding the side triangle, which you can't, you can't.
Okay, um, and then there's going to be sidewalks on all branches?
Yes.
And side?
I'm sorry?
I know, Edge Home is all.
All sides?
All branches. And then the only thing that's relevant is the, the same as the bond, that's for, what was that for?
For the road.
For the sidewalk.
It was, it was for the sidewalk, we built, we bonded the road, that's what we're talking about.
No, no, we were, well, that's not this application, the road is bonded under a separate application to the engineering department, it's not part of this application.
All the way through the property.
All the way through the end of Holte.
All right, we'll confirm that, and if it's not, it'll have to be bonded to part of it.
Yeah, you can't even bond this part of this application, because it's a minor subdivision, and if there's any other way, you're gonna do a major subdivision, so it's not part of this application.
Okay, so it's actually, then just in front of this front?
The curbs, curbs and sidewalks, you can, you can apply, okay?
Yeah, I'm right, I think the only thing that you need to posit is, curve the sidewalk along the Edge Home frontage, because somebody else is doing that, and if that doesn't happen for some reason, obviously it's...
I believe that was...
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, okay, we have a second on that motion. I'll make a second, but I would, essentially, sidewalk, going on the hammerhead, coming back, through that street, to the opposite side of the hole. Something go around it. Or this, how can, how can they go to the school, on, say, kids coming from the whole entire area, the school?
There's, there's no sidewalk any further down, so...
Coming from this, coming from the east side of the dog.
If, if the school, you need to get to Old Street, uh, so that they're not gonna go back through the woods. So i- in order to get to Old Street, uh, there is no sidewalk getting to Old Street. Uh, none of the paper streets are approved, Route Nine is no sidewalk.
That blue line is never gonna be developed?
The blue line can't be developed, there's a, a vacay piece of that area.
Right, progress would be spreading in the grade, but we don't really follow group of progress tools for it. It sounds like they're still deliberating, that's why this is just going on, a good motion, and then a second.
And a second, just question?
So we take the motion, if there's a consensus with what is saying?
Okay, I'll do that. It was a single second motion, with no sidewalk on the, the same as...
I'm lining, I'm lining side.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Which sidewalks?
Which side of the Edge Home? Okay, it was Rock House. Rock House.
Mr. Harper, I ask you to step back, walk a little bit. Uh, Mr. Darby?
Here, go.
Mr. Staple?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Iserson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
Thank you.
M P twenty-three fifty-five, in line with the recommendation of eight four, for one, I'm making an act of the...
Okay, please, let's go to the reports.
Yes, this, uh, this, uh, design waivers from, uh, right-of-way dedications, uh, the, um, the exhibit, right-of-way, those substandard, and they're requesting to do five-foot roadway easements instead of right-of-way dedications. Uh, they just testimony as to, uh, why they should be allowed to do that, uh, they should. They should, and I believe, uh, that's the only contact we can find, so why is there a delay in this part, correct?
Baron's stamp position. So, Mr. Dela.
Mr. Chairman, John Dure on behalf of the applicant. The applicant forty-six Linden is represented by its principal, who's here tonight time, Frankel. Frankel has appeared before this board a number of times, and as you well know, he develops fine product that tries to have, as is this, a non-varyance application. Um, the application, as stated, is for four units. It is a redevelopment of an existing site in an area that has seen significant new growth consistent with what we're seeing. Uh, with respect to the, uh, easement versus dedication issue that suggested, I'll ask Mr. Flattery to discuss that one with the response to the report.
I do, Brian Flattery Jackson, the Jersey license, special engineer, planner. Uh, I have two exhibits marked, A-one and A-two, and I put them in the same direction this time, so as not to confuse myself or anyone else. Uh, the property is located at the corner of Linden Avenue and Sterling Avenue, uh, and, uh, as indicated, we're not seeking any variances.
Squasibl. Squasibl.
That's what I said, Mr. Flattery.
So, uh, on page three of the report, he speaks about, uh, dedicating, uh, additional right away, additional right away, and and this area has developed pretty much with, uh, most of the properties giving the roadway easements, which gives the town the same benefit, uh, but it doesn't create setback issues for the, uh, homeowners. And you can see on A-two, which is the tax map, Linden Avenue, which is the more, uh, more reflect the road and has more traffic on it, so a forty-foot right away, and it, that, which is virtually, uh, all developed. And all of that development, the current application, the applications to this order, this is only where five-foot right away roadway easements were given.
Is there anything different between an easement and dedication to the pension? They develop the road, they own it, whatever they want.
Township can do whatever they want, it's, it's a.
And the building can never take, take that easement out of that road.
That is correct, that is correct. It's, it's on the final map, it's shown, it's there, and just like all the other ones all along. Typically, what, uh, government agencies like to do is they like to have the travelway on a right away, uh, a right away rather than an easement, because that's where most of the activity is going down. The additional five foot is typically for sidewalks, for grading, or something ancillary to the traffic that is on the road. So even the county accepts, uh, these roadway easements in lieu of the dedication, which is the reason for it. And here, the reason is because of the geometry, if we gave the extra five feet, uh, first of all, on Linden Avenue, we do nothing because on both sides of it, it's developed and it's already all the way out to, uh, Route eighty-eight, uh, where Lindy Gardens was developed, with the same concept of the easement. Uh, but what it does is it changes our building block materials and and adversely impacts providing any type of duplexes, uh, that would house the future owners without actually having a variance. So our choices as for an easement where there's no drawback, that nobody loses, uh, or as for a variance, so that we can have units that accommodate the future five.
You're not going to shoot him in the same level?
Yeah.
Before we measure the variance, we'll give you the same.
Yeah. So looking, looking at the report, uh, that's, that's the only issue in design waivers under review comments. It says testimony should be provided as whether the locations these aren't any standard language, like, you know, the. And and we indicated that prior to resolution, the plot plan will satisfy, uh, all of the details to make sure that the township here is satisfied with them. Item nineteen indicates, uh, that we have to provide case of operation details, certainly we'll do whatever's required by ordinance. It had the mandate of the set of overlay to release the center of Linden Avenue will be necessary, uh, and.
No, really, Mark?
Nineteen.
Nineteen is soil.
Nineteen is soil, you have it anymore?
No wonder.
Two on this report. September one, this report?
And the very original, that we've hired.
This is the November twelfth.
Okay, which one is this? We have September one.
September, yeah.
So, so the comment says it can overlay to lease the center of Linden Avenue will be necessary. We rather that that not be a commission because that gives a little pre-ensured ahead. The ordinance is very specific on how much the roadway is impacted, and the engineering department, they figure that out, and we'll do whatever's required by the ordinance. So we would want that to be.
Sorry, sorry, what was the requirement?
The requirement of the ordinance is when you disturb a certain amount, you have to make certain restoration, you have to pay a certain amount. Uh, this comment just says it can overlay to lease the center of Linden Avenue will be necessary. And and my testimony is that I think that's pre-ensured, he's saying what's going to be done. We'll do whatever the ordinance says is the normal, uh.
Whatever gets disturbed, you will fix.
Whatever gets disturbed, we'll fix away the ordinance at, at the engineering department, required to be done.
Okay.
The, the reason for our comment, when, when we looked at what's going to get disturbed between connecting the gas, the, the, say, the storage of the center of road and water, and you add that to the restoration work, it has to be done along the curb along, how you get done with all that? And, and. Most likely, you have to go to the secondary.
Right, now we probably will, we know we probably will.
Just wants, does want it to be.
You guys haven't signed your offer this time, right?
So we have your advice.
Alright, okay, so, okay.
And and item twenty says the project can be forwarded to shade treaty commission for their comments, and I will make my standard shade treaty commission testimony that we'll do whatever's required by the ordinance, whatever's reasonable to the shade treaty commission, so their comments aren't always reasonable, so we don't want to be free to give them a blank check, just us.
We do sidewalks on all, on Linden, Sterling?
Sidewalks, shade trees, curb, and everything according to.
And how many topics does it leave?
We're showing four parts, basically, unit, and for some reason, they fit more bedrooms in there than the ordinance requires, and they would, they would have to put more parking.
You have the room for it? Anything?
Yes, yes. Whatever the ordinance requires on parking, which is the minimum of four, and we've shown the four, uh, but.
You agree with the rest of the report that we have?
Uh, yes, uh, item nine of the report indicates, and I think it's a common relative to the schedule, uh, the side yard setback of seventy, seven and a half, uh, seven. The plan that we show does show seven and a half, but the ordinance only requires seven, so that's why we show it requires seven. The plan shows conceptually seven and a half, uh, but we don't want to lock it into seven, to seven and a half, because if we build it and we're all five inch, uh, now we're over line. Uh, sadly, what we require to do will definitely.
Give it with seven?
Yes. Uh, and and, and item fifteen, the soil warning we'd like to do prior to site plan rather than as far as the complaint, because when we come over plot plan, we'll have, uh, soil work to show.
And then sort of subdivision, which is the soil line.
Definitely, because usually the soil warnings are, are done on a bigger subdivision on, on a project with this site, where we're just doing two duplexes, each duplex that comes in, so it's a little more, to show that the basement's not here.
And effectively, you can't stop the building, including the soil boring.
That's right.
You agree with those two, right?
Yes.
Not varying, mind your point.
Brian, you do also quote, it is possible for you to design wall locks when you're speaking before you're facing Sterling. Explain the board, why you're not doing that.
Uh, this gives a, a much nicer layout in that instead of holding the doors together and and jamming all in, uh, you have to break up the, the front doors and the end. I, I think it provides better rear yards, uh, the, if you look at lots fifteen point oh one and fifteen point oh two, that they have very nice usable rear yards, uh, if you, if you have some correction, and I'll be able to get it right.
Thank you. Anybody from the public that can be heard on this application, please come forward. Mr. Flannery.
Where are our first plating here about to be the two of them?
I have, under the blue letter, number four.
Have an updated one?
For the week count, I don't know one of them. Says in both letters, that applicant engineer confirms that the basement apartments are proposed. So it says that it's going to be apartments, that these rentable units. And obviously, when he's going to go to the building department, he's going to say, no, it's not apartments, it's just living quarters. And therefore, is he will not be required to put in sprinkles. If it's rentable, you have to put in sprinkles. If it's not rentable, it's, I'm bringing up the same problem again, you know? He cannot require him to do anything as far as the building department. But when somebody comes and asks for a waiver or a vans, you could say, I'm giving it to you, but, but the end user, you can't put your head in the sand. I know you did it before. You said this, oh, it's a building subdivision, you know people are emptying out these apartments. So it's, it would be beneficial for the end unit user to be safe and have sprinklers over there, and like this, it's totally legal. Now, the question in this application, don't know, this is a question to the attorney. He's not asking any variance, he's not asking, but it seems like there's a township ordinance that he has to give a dedication to the, a road dedication. So now he's asking to do an easement versus road dedication that the board looks like it's the same thing. If you use that as leverage, as asking him to put in, um, sprinklers. So it has nothing to do with Gemura, I, I, I think you're laughing at the subject. But this problem with sprinklers, it's a safety issue, and the zoning board, I mean, have to give them credit, I don't like that, but I have to give them credit on this. What? Actually, you first. What? Then one more question, my time is running out. He keeps on coming up, there is a shade treaty commission, they sit, they review applications, they give recommendations. The applicant's engineer comes up and says, we're not giving them a blank check. What is the point of having people sitting in shade treaty commission unless if it's a show, you know, they feel good, they sit in a board, they make decisions, and then they come to the planning board and they throw it out the window? It happens almost on every application, he comes up and says, we're not giving them a blank check. Maybe he should explain what the shade treaty commission asked from him and what, what he wants to take off. I think it's a legitimate thing that people took their time, came to the boards, and I know it's not on camera, but they came, they sat, they gave recommendations, and let's hear what they want to take off from their thing.
Brian, what, what are the shade treaty commission recommendations, or what do you want to do?
We, we don't have their recommendations on this one, uh, but they pretty much declined us, that it's very nice that they make recommendations, and usually when I have them, that they have any true recommendations, I say, we'll do this, we'll do this, we'll do that. So two out of three in that.
The chairman of the shade treaty commission, the one for clients, who made it, um, they struggle to have active board members at all periods over the past several years. I believe there's just one gentleman who does all of those reviews, um, who has a lot of knowledge and glancing, and gives some of the recommendations, but also doesn't, is not quite familiar with portions required for the offering, sometimes so that men, so the offer of review are properly required by portions.
That's what we also subject the, our engineer, if you want to.
Correct.
And then you're going to make sure that whatever is required, when you review it.
I mean, this particular thing, it's hard for me to agree with what York does in business.
I understand, but you, you review whatever you have a law, you make sure that's there. Actually, whatever has to be.
And sometimes they don't respond at all to certain application, they choose, we want to talk.
Okay. I think these drivers may be parking lot owners, on the last fifteen, one, fifteen.
Step part, yeah.
Step part.
Yeah.
On, on this show.
Yeah. Standard eighteen by thirty, that's probably a step. Yeah.
People might not like it, it's right away. This report says that, um, the near, um, government's right away, not in.
Yes, and that, and the engineer has recommended right away on, I, I can tell you on the application, uh, and I came up and explained because there's no difference. And, and I guess.
So difference, why is there a difference in right away?
He courts, he wants to war to discriminate, and if he doesn't put it in there, then the board doesn't have to discriminate. But the term of discrimination, it's made on Lindy Gardens, it's made, uh, on, on, and zoning board has made it on, um, all the other places where it's already made. The town gets what they want, the town gets to be able to use it, it's just liking of it as a roadway easement, and, and the remainder of it is, is a right away. Uh, and as indicated, the county standards is they will allow, uh, an actual statement in, in roadway easement, even though they're wet, but they feel that they'd rather have the right away from that. And if a lot's for it such that it would create smaller building blocks, we, we just give the, the additional, in this case, to have these lots be variance free and to provide the house sizes that these two buyers are going to be comfortable in, uh, we're asking for the easement the same as all the other ones, like Linden Avenue and Bergen Avenue, uh, Cherry Street and that whole area.
If you provide a right away, is it a little bit wider?
Yeah. Nobody's going to know the difference, the difference will be on the tax map, it'll be an extra line, and it'll say roadway easement.
I actually had one before, you said there's no difference.
There's no physical difference, there's no, there's no use difference, uh, the only place it will separate is on a, on a survey and on a.
If the town wanted wide and road, we would have already committed by easement, there are opportunities to do that. You'll see solid line, that's the dotted line, or the proxy one, you see dotted one, that's the easement line. The owner will know that, every success, the owner will have, know that the town will have the same rights to do what they would other ones. But as we've come here, we've come here, if you had that solid line, five feet back, it reduces the square footage, it reduces the setback, it creates variance, practically easement is inside the wood, which is how it is. What it wants, your property, it's, uh, property side.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that can be heard on this application? See, normal votes are, are the votes, whatever, as for motion on this application?
One second.
Right, Mr. Moore, second, so I'll go with.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Darby?
Yes.
Staple?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you.
How are we finished tonight?
We're going to go back to the beginning, is this one for this year?
She was outside the door.
Twenty-one eighteen, A, hold on.
Let me schedule.
This is a fantastic major subdivision, consolidates a previous residential lot, or commercial lot, but commercial lot is subject to an application power, the need to apply, so to activate the remaining, I saw.
Okay, so the first is a subdivision?
It actually consolidates, but it's considered, considered a subdivision, because it allows you to acknowledge the previous subdivision, it's not.
So we have to look at the whole application, is it fully followed?
Uh, yeah, or we can.
Well, not creating a lot.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation was going to be to hear them concurrently, would require two separate resolutions, it is in fact two separate applications, but I think they go hand to hand. We've done this many times in the past, it probably would make the most sense to hear them concurrently.
Mr. Gajos, you're here on this application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for, um.
Bobby?
He's for it, don't you know?
Two applications for it. That's just your opinion before, yeah. Uh, I am here for, for, which is off your, your power, and I hear opposition to this application. Uh, I would agree that this application should be very pleasant, but we fully enjoy this only for application, and by doing it, the two applications, the two separate notices, I think that, uh, you fell asleep, because you're creating, uh, the existing lot, subdivision in there, and in the time zone, commercial use, and I believe it slows in that notice, that that lot, which was partially growing residential use, will not become a commercial use apart from site. In addition to that, I, I challenge the vote, I don't believe there's sufficient votes to people who are interested in it. Well, indeed, the two others are the, for this year, what you're really doing is you're amending and proof this site plan and site condition, so the question is, do you think there are people who are interested of commercial, so that a part of that is most clearly of the original plan that was created in previous resolution, and.
I should.
You're saying that the subdivision should have been notified together with the second application, because why? Because maybe someone doesn't propose to be subdivision, but they're supposed to be being subdivision and an act of, of commercial property, is that right? This is one big application.
No, I, I, I know. Some divide.
This resolution approval included for residential use as well as certain commercial use. So then I would come back and put into amend that previous resolution by the subdivision was one of the residential lots included to commercial use, but you're not getting the notice, and you're not getting what it's having to do, or on spot, the, the, the feet of the original resolution, and changing, uh, the plan from the original resolution, so therefore, I'm saying, the notice is efficient, but, but more importantly.
Did you have to look how many people were not notified, because then?
Oh, you look, you look at the, uh, the, the plan showing what people, what they want, and wanting those people to receive a, a, a grant. Now nicely, if you look at what you're creating, if you're taking a lot, two lots actually, because it's a difference, it's immediate relation to the, uh, commercial piece, and you're looking at something like that in there, what you just called a lot one and lot two, you're looking to take lot one and attach it to the commercial piece, that will then be lot two as a pre-same lot now. What you're really doing, you're doing that, you're creating a lot for the lot, because you've got a sixty-foot wide requirement in that zone to build a, uh, residential use, and now you're going to have thirty feet, so I was initially respectful, that you cannot create a, a lot size which is not permitted in that area. Your engineer also notices, or notes in his comments, that that one undersized lot will remain as a vacant lot, an unused lot. How can you possibly discern that without putting it in the notice and not granting a variance to create an undersized lot? One lot being thirty, wide, and then wide sixty, so those are my initial comments, well, I believe that notice was not proper, this knowledge is not received forward.
Mr. Jensen.
Uh, Mr. Draper, my, we can really feel that, um, you're out of.
Well, can I just ask the, respectfully, how does one, certainly notices out of it, when creating the undersized lot, and you're not getting notice of or requesting a variance for an undersized lot?
But, excuse me, if I can just object for a moment, we're not creating an undersized lot. We're not creating, no, we're not, that lot exists on a filed map that was already filed. We're not creating an undersized lot. We're not creating an undersized lot. Also, next to different, and once Mr. Jackson has already conferred over that, but, Al, if you can just check the list of neighbors that were notified, I remember having this, I remember having this discussion, actually.
I don't have the files here. I know there were.
We had, we had this discussion.
I know there were questions about the lot numbers listed on your application, and the lot numbers listed on the age review letter. This review letter from the amended subdivision did reference all of the lots on the very side.
If I can jump through here, at this point, let's just let it be for the second week, and then we can, once we put all the reasons through.
I mean, there is something, I don't hear, this was, did you know how many people were notified originally, and how many.
First of all, I, I don't have it, I don't have it on me. I'm not even certain that Mr. Gaziraski is correct, that we didn't notify all the neighbors based on the subdivision. I remember having the discussion.
I never prepared any of this.
You didn't prepare, okay.
I give as ever a question, may I prepare the list of questions?
Do you think there were some people that weren't notified, or not notified on the second vote?
I think there's one property question, it's the corner on Locust and Route Nine. I think they're required to.
If that's the like, we're here, and.
Yeah, it can't be, it can't be very many.
But the issue is, once you self-divide, excuse me, once you self-divide and make an action, you can't go back and read this in the original subdivision, every time you do a subsequent subdivision, or every time you do a subsequent site plan, that's as concerned once that decision is made. A new application only affects the four corners of that new application. That's why we made our decision that notice wasn't. Otherwise.
No, no.
It's like a hundred years, it was only one parcel in the whole town, exaggerating, but not that much. Everything is self-divided this year, so you don't have to look back every time you do additional action on it.
No, I see, but you get to our point, that, you know, if the idea was to come one week and then the next week, another application, they knew what was going to happen.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't. I don't.
If, if, Mr. Isaacson, if I may, this is a subdivision map that's been filed. So these lots exist, I think, I think that's the part that just requires clarification, which I.
Is it developed already?
It is not developed, but the map is filed, and the undersized.
It wasn't sold.
No, it wasn't sold, the map has been filed. We had, Al and I actually had this discussion, as far as what list to request.
Half a dozen.
And I gave you an experience here, I'll be.
No, no, I, I know that, and I'm, no, no, a hundred percent.
Okay, let's proceed.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to, yes. I understand that the original application, subdivision of mine, was for number of big likes houses. And in order to accomplish that, you really have to have, basically, you're building one house on two lots. That's how you get the satisfaction of the zone ordinance. So here.
Not one house on two lots.
Two houses on. But, but the choice.
House on two lots.
To suit a lot.
Right. I, I hear what you're saying. I think it would be best, let's hear the case, and then you can put your opposition on, what are your terms together, or else you spend the whole night. Let's see, how does some hold? No, decisions have been made, all those issues are open.
Thank you, Mr. Isaacson, appreciate that.
We're listening to both applications together, and so, as they, please go over the reports. Tell us, which one is first, which one wants to approve, which one is the original, which one is the second.
We're gonna, we're gonna do it together, because the variance is worth.
Just give me one second, we're just trying to.
I've identified for Mr. Table, the two applications for your hearing, now your fellows have been approved. One of them is amending a previous.
Which one?
The subdivision is amending a previous major subdivision. However, it's only amending.
Both of them say goodbye, okay. Okay, one second. Al, we have two reports, a day, one says Yeshua Frankel, and one says Autozone.
The S T is the subdivision, and the S P for Autozone is the site.
Right, what, what happens here, Chris, is that they're, whether they say subdivision to create the parcel with the Autozone site plan. And in order to do that, they're amending a subdivision that is previously been activated. So.
So I'm not to vote for both of the votes, and we will not take a vote on the subdivision until we hear the spot.
You really have to listen to both, because I'm.
And you go through both reports, just, just seeing which report I want to vote.
So anyhow, starting with the subdivision, what happens is that they're amending the subdivision to create the proposed lot, the Autozone, and it requires a variance because it would be undersized. The zone requires minimum home measure, and they're at almost thirty thousand square feet, said in the.
That's, that's two thirds of ninety one.
Right. And then, and then for going for that, that undersized lot that they're asking for variance on, they would need a corner yard setback of, from, now, from the Blueberry Court, remember this is, they're gonna be a corner lot now. Blueberry Court is the cul-de-sac going into Route Nine, where they would need fifty feet to only propose a forty-five point three.
They want second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They, I, I see there's submission waivers before the variance is.
Oh, that's a good point.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I'm, well, we're talking about the same report.
Yeah, the first thing we should do, that's a good point, let's, let's take action on the submission waiver, which will be the subdivision. We explained in our report what, what needs to be done. This will require, the different approval will require grant of ownership and plenty of order of approval. Currently, the request is a waiver unless that action is in place. Because the subdivision, and they technically have to show everything within two hundred feet, there is enough information on the term plans where they don't have to do that because it's not for the design. And then there were submission waivers that were previously granted, the original application for the revival impact saving and architectural plans. At, at the time, that this was approved, they need to submit architectural plans. So that's why that's on there, Chris. And then we'll have architectural plans for the site plan later, for the Autozone. So you should first take action on the submission waivers.
So you agree with all of to grant that?
Yes, you agree with that.
Okay. I would ask for motion to go along with the engineers' positions. All right, move. Mr. Myers, second, roll in favor.
Aye.
Okay, now, now we're back onto the, the variances.
Well, that is also the, right, we're talking about the area variance for the subdivision that creates the site plan lot.
That's not the variance on the subdivision.
Right. Going to the site plan, they need some, some same submission waivers for the site plan, and while this is a new site plan, I, we do point out that the site plan that was purely created this subdivision, created corner lot, also got a submission over for revival impact saving, they're asking for that same one, in this case. So we should also take action on the submission waivers for the site.
And do you agree with that on the site plan?
Yes.
Well, that's a motion on the waivers on the site plan. Guys, move. Mr. Myers, second, roll in favor.
Aye.
Okay, grant it.
Now, getting to the other variances, um.
The zone?
The zone. Corner yard setback, Blueberry Court is the cul-de-sac, though, is your section, Route Nine. They need a corner yard setback.
We're doing the S T, correct?
Correct. Fifty feet is required, they're proposing forty-five point three three. They need a minimum side yard setback variance, that would be for the south side of lot. Proposing twenty-five, where thirty is required. Rear yard setback, that's going to the west of the direction on this lot. Ten feet is proposed, where fifty feet is required. There's a minimum front yard setback, the roof, not in the center line of Route Nine, that are at fifty-seven point five feet, where sixty-five is required.
That's for the central line of Route Nine, if they want it, Route Nine, right?
Correct.
Okay, which is the, the big one.
And now I will point out that the desire, the desire of the temple's little section for Route Nine is fifty-seven feet, so they did go beyond that.
But required is sixty-five.
Correct.
I do witness.
And then the site identification sign, they have a variance for the setback, they're nine feet in Blueberry Court, where it's fifteen feet is required. And I don't know, we can't tell from the drawing if there's any other sign that's required.
So right now, you said there's about seventy, six or seven.
Now, another thing that's been pointed out, it's already been brought up and around about, like, with this amended subdivision, what's happening, they're taking what has to be a lot that was, let's say, half a duplex structure, putting it for, into this proper site plan, and they're leaving, which means they have to leave the other half of that, that edge of lot, which would have been another half a duplex structure, has to be made, because it's a small building.
No, they, to me, undersized lot, and they can come back, or come down.
Well. It has to go to board adjustment for that, now, amending is self-created, part of that board adjustment, don't deny it, basically.
It's not self-created, must be approved.
No, no, it is self-created.
I agree, the question we have, it, it, it looks like it has to be made a lot at this point, well, what's the, what's the use gonna be for it? Is it gonna be for a playground, it doesn't apply? Why is that a lot also including going to this site plan, which would reduce the magnitude of these other variances? And that's our, that's our question, if you want to hear the testimony.
Okay. And the, the design waivers?
Design waivers, with regard to property, and they need twenty-five feet of non-residential use, they don't have that. And then also, with regard to fence height, they need design waivers as well.
Do you have any questions there?
Yes.
Basically, they're, they're.
So, Mr. Hertz, what I would recommend is ask Mr. Kachuba with the mass to briefly explain the history and what they're doing, on behalf of the applicant. Is that okay with you, Ms. Myers?
We're, we're gonna do that. Can I enter my appearance and, and present the case? That, that's definitely part of our case.
Okay. Can, can we do that at the beginning, though, that part of it?
Yeah, just give me a second, enter my appearance.
Of course.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Autozone Inc., I will, you want me to have?
I don't want to interfere with how you want to present the case.
You want me to have Mr. Kachuba's word? I was gonna do some of that initially, if you'd like me to have Mr. Kachuba's word first, I can, I can certainly do that.
Mr. Kachuba, ladies right at the right hand, you swear a firm testimony before this court, but you truth the whole truth and nothing of the truth.
I do. Joseph Kachuba, K C A, hearing services, and as long as you're true.
I, I just thought it would be helpful for the board, and I know, uh, Mr. Kachuba is very good at explaining things, especially with diagrams, and, uh, this is a little convoluted, and I think it might be fit to start just by showing where the lot is, the geometry, exactly what you're doing, having to explain the old subdivision.
You have the original map, all of them.
Yeah, we, we brought everything, we're prepared for this, Mr. Kachuba, if you can, if you could go ahead and explain, explain to the board the history here.
So we have the file map of the original major subdivision. We have the file map of the original major subdivision here, mark that, uh, where, A one.
And we don't have copies of that, right?
Uh, correct. It wasn't part of the submission package, because again, this wasn't part of this application. Well, we highlighted in blue here the two lots in question. So a subdivision was created with a cul-de-sac of Route Nine, proposed road called Blueberry Court.
Where is that blue?
Uh, blue is right here.
Anyone has a red letter? No, try to.
Brian, what is Brian?
Brian left to right.
Brian left.
I got it.
Oh, God.
Thank you, John. So this is.
Archored eyes.
So the subdivision created all these lots, lots exist then.
Map was filed.
Map was filed with the county, created by F W H, last revised February fifth, two thousand eighteen. It is a file map, all these lots are there now. We are proposing to consolidate two lots.
Do you know what, they are developed at this point?
They are not developed at this point, other than the commercial lot, seven point oh one, had existing building on it originally, that is the building we're in. The remainder, the roadway has not been developed, and thus, none of the lots have been built.
All right. Hold on one minute. Hold on one minute. Where, where is this located?
Right, this is advanced water park, we're here. The D O T R is right back here, eight or longer. Eight or longer is over here.
It's on the other side of, of Route Nine.
No, it's on the same side as us.
Okay.
So this is just north of advanced water park, immediately north of their park.
And you're south of, of Long Yard?
We are north of North.
You're north of.
So advanced and.
Cross Street.
Uh, yes.
Wolfcamp.
We're next. See those questions?
The Wolfcamp.
Sir. Thank you.
So that's the location, that's, what we're doing is just consolidating two lots. So we, we submitted a subdivision in abundance of caution, purely to consolidate lots. Typically, we would come in with a site plan showing that we're doing it on two lots, you guys would wait to get a condition of our approval, and we consolidate it too. But in this case, the original subdivision did show a duplex extending onto one of these lots. We want to make sure, in abundance of caution, we noticed properly, got a proper approval to combine those two lots, so if there isn't any question later, we did appropriate. So we filed an as a minor subdivision, we're not subdividing anything, not making anything smaller, we're actually combining these two lots to make a major.
Let's step back one second. Were they approved for what, that big lot?
So the big lot was approved for.
Commercial.
Commercial.
For a commercial independent.
For a commercial.
For a commercial site, I'm gonna go through the variances that were granted on that, is there exactly the same as the whole horizon? We're at it today.
So, so, so just to clarify, Joe, the lot that we're talking about today, that is a commercial lot, and actually, and is undersized, and that is the lot that Mr. Gaziraski was referring to as the undersized lot? In fact, we're making that lot larger?
That is correct.
So we are actually decreasing the non-conformity, is that correct?
Correct. It's currently twenty-four thousand square feet, twenty-four thousand thirty-five.
And what was it before?
That is, that was before, we're actually adding another five thousand two hundred eighty square.
So they understand something about the lot that you're adding is five thousand square, so you're adjusting that lot line with this application.
Yes.
Under this smaller lot. And you've noticed, to modify the shape, configuration, and size of that, the lot will refer.
Yes.
Yes. We, we filed a minor subdivision out for whatever reason, rather than just coming in and saying we're gonna consolidate.
Okay, all right. So every lot line, or a lot line is being moved, put a circle around there, every one with the two hundred feet has been noticed?
Correct, there's one lot I'm being removed.
Okay, thank you, please proceed.
Was supposed to be a duplex.
Was supposed to be a duplex, correct. So that, this is being included into the commercial lot, and the other lot will remain. Now, there's a note on this subdivision that required that no residential development be proposed on these two lots or these two lots, during, uh, an oversight, time of the application, that, uh, the, the ordinance ever changed did not allow residential with two hundred feet or not.
Do we have your sheet of what you were referring to?
No. This is just what he said, I can firmly handle that.
Hold on one minute, Mr. Kachuba, you testified that there was a note added that these two lots will not be developed.
Seven point oh two and seven point oh three.
Thank you, that's all.
Will not be developed residential.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, seven point oh three, seven point oh four.
And an additional.
Seven point oh one and seven point oh two as well.
Seven point oh two was commercial.
Hold on a second.
One second. One other time, seven point oh four and oh three was supposed to be what? Or were they approved for?
They were, it was, the application was approved as a duplex. Within the last days of prior filing of this map, it was determined by the engineering office that it was a variance created by having residential within two hundred feet of Route Nine.
Okay.
So they add us, add this note, pointing to it here.
Where is it from over there?
Route Nine's here. So these are duplexes pointing to lots, seven point one three, seven point one four, and seven point oh four, seven point oh three. These were. These were within two hundred feet, so stated that we had to place a note saying we could not build residential on those lots without a use permit.
Now you want to consolidate this?
Two hundred feet, no, it doesn't, doesn't take any of this, it takes after that one.
And what do you do with these two lots?
Those lots are not part of this application, I don't know what we're gonna build them, so that has to say, we're not gonna build them.
You've done lots.
Yes, they have the same problem, but they're not part of this application.
So what's gonna be with seven point oh four?
So AutoZone did not wish to purchase seven point oh four. Initially, that would have been, we would have.
As I'm asking you a question, we're, we're coming with all these barriers as, and AutoZone will buy the extra piece of property, all the barriers will go away?
No, they will go away, uh, and I'll test, I'll go through all of it.
Although, but I just want to understand.
You asked a lot of barriers on them.
No, but I just want to understand, the initial proposal was that the seller did come to AutoZone, did ask AutoZone to buy that parcel, AutoZone did not wish to purchase that parcel, because they didn't feel they need that extra piece to do whatever they need to do here. Really, we're not asking for any barriers that were already granted as part of the previous rule. If anything, we are in fact diminishing the nonconformity as we shown from the testimony.
Right now to new application.
I understand that.
Right, and you're asking for that, you, you have to give your.
That's correct, but obviously, if they've already been granted your existing conditions that were granted, and the board should lay some weight to that, that's.
And Route nine became easier since then, and, and Route nine was not, was not the line yet, so.
Can I get into that, we have, and we're just gonna finish the talk from before, not all the barriers go away, but they do, you know, the lot area does get larger if that lot were included in this.
So the add lot.
Certain things would get a little better, but not all the barriers go away.
The add lot that we made.
Seven point oh four, yeah.
This is approved, what Mr. Gazowski said at the outset, we're going to have a half lot that was supposed to be a whole lot of lot that was supposed to be duplex, now it's undersized, you really can't do anything. What do you, as the planner for the applicant, would, would you believe could be done with that lot, or not done with that lot?
Uh, that lot would remain, uh, vacant, it, it couldn't be developed commercially unless they came here for a site plan approval, we would have to grant them, we're hopeful to do something with that.
What belief and answer to that lot?
It's thirty by, uh.
Yeah.
It's five thousand two hundred and eighty square feet, it's bigger than the other one.
It's a thirty foot wide lot.
Correct.
So, uh, in, in, in your opinion, would that be a self-created hardship, that the applicant is now creating a thirty foot undersized lot?
Well, that's the thing, we're not, we're not creating it, it's there, it exists, but we're not allowed to develop it residentially, so I know the thought is, well, we would put a duplex there, but we already told them, had to put a note, a note on the map saying we can't put a duplex there anyway.
My question to AutoZone, should probably go whole thing.
Well, AutoZone doesn't want to have a whole thing, AutoZone doesn't want to spend their money, I understand.
So this thing is correct, if you have an applicant coming in with an undersized lot, and they're alleging a hardship, which would be probably what you're looking for, for your barriers, it is certainly the right of the board to explore whether a property is available nearby. Now, I realize this is a commercial lot, it's not required, you don't have to do by seller, it's by, by seller, it's not by the lot, but I think when that lot's available and it's ready on the table, I think that is something the board, uh, can, can look at, to see what the hardships is.
And our testimony, we, we've already done that, we added the first portion of the law.
I don't think it's bothering like it is an undersized residential lot.
Correct, I, I would disagree that we're creating any hardship with this lot. Yeah, I acknowledge it is an extremely unique situation, but we're not creating any hardship, the lot is there, we can't put a duplex on it anyway, so.
Just, just to, for the board, and so I can get my head around this, it, it's really a, a, an unusual circumstance, because that lot is developable when it is connected with another undersized lot.
No, it's not, though.
Well, you can put it.
No, you can't, you can't put a duplex on it, because we're not allowed to have residential uses within two hundred and fifty.
You can, you can, you can sell it commercial. We can sell it commercially, yes, but it cannot be used for residential purposes, because we have a unique situation here, because we have a subdivision that got approved,
and then on the eve of the map filing, somehow it was decided, I guess by the engineering department, that there was a mistake made.
But this is more, we're going back to the same, AutoZone's company, they want to save some money, and we're creating an undersized lot, which I don't want to have.
Well, we're not creating it, it exists. It's an existing lot that was created by a previous subdivision.
Then we'll sell the whole thing, and then we would take care of a lot of, a lot of problems, instead of having a lot of problems, you'd have to deal with it down the line. I think, the chairman is saying, now we have ten thousand square feet, although it's combined into two lots, but it's separate lot, but you combine it, it's ten thousand square feet. Now you're giving away half of it, that's for sure leaving that property, five hundred square feet, five thousand square feet of unused land, nothing can be ever developed of that. Whatever, they're gonna come back for some barriers to say that we've created the lot.
Well, but in some ways, that's the landlord's problem, now, what they'll do with the lot is, is really.
We're gonna give them the barriers down the line.
Well, I think that's a different question, but I don't, I don't, I think I have to look at the merits on the AutoZone's application for the lot that they want to develop. And you have to say, is there adequate parking, are there adequate turn radiuses, is there room for the garbage, uh, is there enough for buffers, et cetera, we have to see what their site plan.
And you said they aren't asking for all the barriers.
Well, but until you hear their case, you don't know the merits of what is appropriate to grant, and it may not be.
And that's what I, I know it's an existing lot that was filed with the map, it was filed with a cross street.
It was filed on the applicant's older home, as they were advised in the following, they suggested on filing that with that note requiring use bearings anyway.
Do you believe, do you believe it's a residential?
They believe, I think that they could get the zoning board to agree with it, so they would not grant it.
As soon as it's covered.
Uh, yes.
So I'm pointing to mother, then to father, you know.
Uh, we need Mr. Rover to try and ask.
Yeah, I mean, he answered it, but I don't think.
You're lying for a use damage.
I don't know the answer to that.
That, that, we know the answer. We know the answer.
We request, we made that application.
That's why I go back to the map. Um, Mr. Jackson, would the board have any authority to, like, recommend, aside from the AutoZone purchasing that little lot that we discussed about, can the board recommend, beyond just picturing in the future that the developer's gonna own it, they're stopping tax law, because you can't do anything, whether the town's gonna head owning it anyway, and then, can you, can the board recommend they, that the developer, like, go in that part to the town?
Is that a little of the part?
Well, no.
The issue, the issue is that if that part is part of the residential subdivision, it still needs you here.
But if it stands on its own, it's owned by the township, I don't know that that would be classified as residential, I know we discussed it, but that's the thing.
I, I, I would not speculate what might happen with the lot that somebody owns, when they sold one of their lots off to the market as well, but, you know, but people have undersized lots for years, all over town, all over the country.
I, I can understand that, you know, that's something you see a lot in the engineering department, where the developer tries to, uh, dedicate, for example, a, a, a basic lot to the town, and the town doesn't want it acceptable, the developer stops paying in tax law, and then they sold it in tax day, and headed down the line, because I feel like.
Creating a problem.
The board's facilitating the remainder of this dispute, so they're turning the head down the line, for, you know, Joe Schmo, who buys it twenty years from now, since, since, since that lot, you have to build it.
I asked you that originally, you know, if by forcing AutoZone to buy the extra pieces of property, or, or some other commercial person will buy it, and we take away a lot of barriers, why should we rent all of that lot?
It's fine to force somebody to buy a property, you know, you could. I, the AutoZone lot is approved for an AutoZone now, right?
No. The group of office now.
Office. We're changing.
The, the single lot seven point oh.
All those things can go into the sauce.
If they wouldn't ask for any barriers, I wouldn't care. But actually, the lot, the Route nine's busy street, very busy over there.
Well, I think what the applicant is hearing, that the board is real crazy about the application at this stage, if you want to go back to try to negotiate something, or just come back with a, a better plan, with, uh, more property. Everybody's jumping all.
Maybe convince AutoZone to buy the rest.
Okay, I guess, I mean, we, we need to give you any barriers testimony, if you want to. If you'd like to, or if not, you can go back to your board, we can.
Um, well, Tom, I hear from the board, there's a lot of barriers, is, is we're creating undersized lots out there, I, I don't think the board is so inclined. Mr. Crawford, what, what do you have there? You got any comments?
No, I'm only saying you can't go forward with your application, what my suggestion is, I see Mr. Gazowski's here, we have his planner here, he's ready to, he's ready to go. Um, the board seems a little skeptical, from what I'm hearing, that they haven't heard the whole case yet, why don't you go back and see what you can arrange, rather than go through, you know, with.
It's up to you.
The rubber process, appeals.
I think, I think we're hearing from the board, that the board is not comfortable with the application, and we'll have to go back to the applicant to discuss it with the applicant.
Unless you want to put the, go forth.
You know, we can put the testimony on the record, we'll probably end up carrying it in any event, to go back, the question is, does the board want to hear the testimony regarding the barriers?
The board would love to hear. The question is, do you want to go through all that, I see Mr. Gazowski here his case, and when you're off on a, a hard, you know, you're off on the wrong foot, it sounds like to me, from all the questions, but what do I know, I don't get a vote. Just trying to be practical, but you can do.
He just wanted to go home.
Eventually, I want to go home. Well, I can pay by the hour, I'll sit up here all night.
We'll sit up there all night.
It's a unique situation, that when, when land is available, and you send it over, and we're asking for all the barriers, and then we can, they can have a piece of property that's going to be useless for the township.
I think, I think we've, I mean, we, we've heard your, we've heard your point, we'll have to go back to the applicant, who's, you know, large corporate client, so they were not able to be present tonight.
Um, let me call the board, Suburban, Suburban, what do you feel?
Saying you should come back.
Do you feel, when you feel we should give them the barriers, but you know the way it is, sustainable? I would like to hear more, but. You want to hear more, you want to? I would like to see what kind of your guys, Henry presented. Who you? Come on here.
Eric, I would recommend it to the board, since they, they would still write notes, like, due date has included, and by date of fact.
The thing that strikes me was Ms. Morris's information, and we've had several cases like this, that have been resulted in litigation, where we'll have these lots that become unwanted,
and somebody picks the lot up, either through a foreclosure or a tax sale, and then they try to do something with it that wasn't, had nothing to do with the original plan for the subdivision, and they've really become a problem. We, we've had a couple, uh, litigated cases like that, and, you know, this kind of has that all written all over it. You've already turned down by the board of adjustment you indicated.
AutoZone owns that property?
No, they're contract purchasers.
And, uh.
Yeah, that's wrong.
I didn't understand what the consensus was on this.
That's, that's a little bit of a time, Walmart and Target are right next to each other, right?
That's okay, that's what keeps prices down.
That's what I just said, Walmart and Target are right across from each other, right?
That's what they call capitalism.
That's why they like the site.
How many Wawa's are across the street from Seven-Eleven, you know, you see a lot of them.
Just watch the moment you want to.
I'm hearing the board, I'm hearing the board, I, I don't need to stay here all night just to hear Mr. Gazowski talk, if, if the board. I love hearing Mr. Gazowski talk, if the board is, I, I, I'm hearing the board loud and clear.
If you please, you'll be irony of your statement, and there.
I think we will go back to the applicant, we will tell the applicant exactly what the board said, and we'll go from there.
This one, he, he'll, he'll agree to require you to have requirements on both applications?
Yes, and we understand that it would require new notices as well.
Thank you.
Good writing, and we'll have pretty open.
And maybe just notice whoever Mr. Gazowski does wasn't.
Yeah. One question, if we're going to be consolidating, wouldn't it be more, uh, economical to just simply have one application, uh, which, quite frankly, I think could eliminate also some issues as to the possible appeal, that's what's.
But you guys can talk.
Is there a reason why you, you brought us to some of that question?
Well, yeah, we brought in the minor subdivision, and I wanted to talk, because we're changing views, uh, and it wasn't just a simple consolidation, because we had that issue of, it was approved originally as a duplex.
What do you mean, you changed?
The subdivision approval on that.
Which one is it, which one do you usually have to change? Mr. Gazowski, do you want to identify who your client was, what's your client? And what, what says interesting, I suppose?
The, the, he has a huge property, the jury.
And he's here this evening?
He said he's here.
We're not, uh, it's not a huge amount of area.
It's not a huge one.
It's just a change of use, which is.
Correct. We, we, we already did the subdivision as an abundance of caution, rather like mentioned here, and possibly be subject to, uh, challenge, is that we didn't amend the subdivision, uh, because we're changing what the use is shown on the original subdivision. But it's not, it's not a, a use practice, this use is permitted.
If it would be a use variance, it wouldn't be in front of this board.
Correct, and we had a lengthy discussion about that at the technical.
What was before the zoning was on the line?
We went into duplexes, we, uh, we made an application.
The duplexes are not.
The duplexes that were on the plan, just allows to build them within two hundred feet of Route nine.
Why did the zoning board say you should do that property?
Uh, their, uh, response was just that would be, the ordinance is two hundred feet, and we should buy that.
So they wanted that should be part of the commercial.
They wanted commercially extend further back, that's all.
The whole issue was, the owner wasn't wanting to sell that, it was not.
All I know is they are contract purchasers of lots seven point oh two and seven point oh three, that's the, uh.
The other choice is.
Not seven point oh. Not seven point oh.
Yeah, the other choice is, if AutoZone comes in for the variance free application, and they build the building smaller, and then.
Well, to be clear, we're not getting variance free, even if we added that lot, with the variance.
No, we're not, forget about that, if you build the building smaller, you can have variance.
No, because the lot is undersized, but it can't be variance free by definition.
Even adding both, we're still undersized.
Well, which would be, to be subject to.
We could be subject to, that's.
Potentially.
Potentially, but we can't, we can't be variance free, which is quite.
Let me see, two options, AutoZone buys other property, and we, we, you take all, all of the barriers, or you minimize your building, or the, they assault somebody else, or we'll take the whole property. Trying to have a, with this variance possible. What else? Not what else? AutoZone gave you all of it. Would you like to present?
AutoZone?
Yes.
Looks essentially a claim.
He's the current owner of the property.
They made a little part of the story.
Mr. Gazowski, your client has no relationship, no ties, no interest, it all would be competitor, uh, auto parts.
Not one.
Not your own, she didn't, or, or. He lives near here, I'm just wondering what is, what is the objection.
Something about it.
Well, I, I just want to.
It is an interesting part, we'll talk to you later. Something, if they, if they put their case forward.
But sometimes it's, it hasn't been unheard of for people to be like, uh, uh, what's the word?
We see sometimes in like that whole town business, there's a lot of competition.
I, I, because I think the board is entitled to know.
And I, I was telling you that, when I come back, she presents her case, often it's.
I, I'm just trying to understand what.
I'm gonna help you all night, guy.
I want to understand the dynamic of what the objection is. Your client live here here? Or is he like?
You don't squat me in the door.
What, what lot?
Well, you know what, I know you don't live in the lot of yours, but when I come back.
But he's right here, could you tell us what's on, so that you want to know.
Nor sound involved, then you're the property name, commercial.
Is that just now? Did we, did we ask this now on the lot?
I just want a representation for Mr. Gazowski, that his client has no affiliation, no interest, no relationship, no, uh, motive for, uh, collusion. I, 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 I don't mean that negatively, I can't think of a word, cooperation with the competitive business, I just, if that, if you make that representation, that's.
I have no knowledge of that, but I will tell you that if you come back.
Well, can you confirm with your client, if there's no, um, you know, any, uh, interest or in, in, in assisting the competitor?
Beyond speaking outside, I think that's probably improper.
I know, because I think the board is entitled to know, it's a competitor, competitor.
I think they have that, I think they have the right to certain things, if she wants to see forward this evening, take the shot with the self-organization, I'm gonna do that.
But I, I, I just think that, that the board can view as a competitor, who are the one behind an objection, and I think it's fair.
If the objector's a competitor, it goes to the credibility of my client's face.
It does, and, and I think it's fair to ask the objector to, to state on their.
I, I will provide that to you before we come back, if we come back.
You can't go talk to them now?
I'm not.
Again, we don't have, we don't have objection, we don't have objection to presenting our case, if that's gonna help the board, and make the board, and then Mr. Gazowski will present his case, we can table it after that point, that's for certain. I, I would have preferred that, because honestly, I'd like to know what, what the, what Mr. Gazowski's client's objection is over there.
I'd like to know why your client's too cheap to buy the extra lot.
Any objection, if you want? Um, it doesn't want to go. I don't wanna go.
On, on. I, you know, I guess. I think it's fair for the board to get confirmation of whether an objector is motivated by, you know.
I can do the next question, I'll provide it to you when we come back.
Well, we could present it tonight if the board wants to hear it.
Not that, uh, I feel for the board, there's so much objection, I think you should go back and see if you could get out the property, or make AutoZone smaller and take over some variances.
It's still, if you create a lot, I think.
Yeah, which I, I'm not the court. I mean, I told the board before, anybody said that you should go back to the board. Is that what I agree?
Yes.
What?
Can I copy that, the AutoZone, did you handle the application?
I did not. The one at the zoning board, I did not handle.
It's a resolution.
I'm sure if you had it, you'd buy it approved.
That's right. Thank you.
There's a resolution denied, I have a copy.
And you know, the one at the zoning board, I first got this application, so.
So you are gonna re-notice?
We are, yes. We already stipulated that, but we will, we will definitely notice, I mean, it will be a different application most likely, because the board has given us their feedback on this one, so we will re-notice, and we'll wait any time. Okay.
I'll say thank you.
Members of the public, if you'd like, that's the only one that needs to be anybody who's a triangle, and it's twenty-two, ninety-nine by, and. AutoZone have been scheduled, they told me to notice, and we'll have to merge. We should take this for a minute, and then we'll merge.
Yeah, if we go a couple minutes, we had this Monday, um, well, we had the class, which I recommend whether, whether could come, should come, even if it took a test.
You do have. Well, you do have.
Okay, when, when the class is ready, I'll take that, it's not on. I usually want to come, you know, I have ten in the class.
Required, it's for the member who's here, and just.